We're going to get started with the agenda portion of the reading and then followed up by the polling portion. We'll admit it for February 15th. We have ordinances on second reading, O-Dash-07-1109-1. Orders to amend and supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick. Please come forward solid waste collection and disposal list is going to be. Talk away, I will talk about it, but it's coming all the way actually, this part of this one. O-Dash-021202, orders to authorize the conveyance of certain property in the parking authority of the City of New Brunswick.
It says to be published because if we don't do this last week, the town has gotten this place and it's had to be published. It's actually boned on. But the town's secretary will be the motion parrot and then we'll actually adopt that change.
O-Dash-021203, orders authorizing a guarantee by the City of New Brunswick County Middlesex State of New Jersey of not exceeding forty-eight million dollars in aggregate principal amount of city guarantees. Parking revenue refunding bond series two zero one two A of the parking authority of the City of New Brunswick. O-Dash-021204, ordinance to amend and supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick to clarify taxi cab fees. O-Dash-021205, amendment supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick. Right turn on red prohibited George Street and Albany Street. O-Dash-021206, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick, Title X, traffic and parking delete two residential handicap parking zones. Bartlett Street and Townsend Street and add three residential handicap parking zones. Bartlett, Townsend, and South Orange Streets. O-Dash-021207, ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick. This deals with the wreckers. We have ordinances on first reading. O-Dash-031201, ordinance to authorize the sale of certain property of the City of New Brunswick to the housing authority of the City of New Brunswick. O-Dash-031202, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick. Taxes. What's this different than?
The other ones clarify fees. This is going back after selling the last two licenses that we've had and before we've done forty parts. None of them will be seen through and watch it sell and then we'll credit it to what we've done.
O-Dash-031203, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick. Parades. O-Dash-031204, an ordinance to grant ease and over course on Barton Street, the City of New Brunswick. That's it on the ordinance on first reading. We have resolutions, R-Dash-031201, approved agenda amendments. Zero two A, approve payroll from February 4th to February 17th. Zero two B, approve payroll from February 18th to March 2nd. And zero two C, approve payroll, this one employs association retroactive pay from January 1st, 2012 through February 17th, 2012. Zero three is being pulled at the request of the city clerk as unnecessary. Zero four, authorized refund for deemed tax sales certificates. Zero five, approved professional service contract. We're doing this non-procton with Blooming Cattle's for New Brunswick and Highland Park Kennel Services. January 1st, 2012 to December 31st, 2012, not to exceed seventeen thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars. Zero six, approval order of contract with Grand Valley Truck Sales for one sanitation truck in Public Works Department, not to exceed two hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Zero seven, approved request for solicitation of funds requested by the Rutgers University Colleges against cancer. Dates March 20th through March 23rd, March 26th, March 30th, April 2nd through April 6th, and April 9th through April 12th, 9:00 AM through 6:00 PM. Intersections of George and Albany, George and Commercial, George and Hamilton, Rogers Lane and Dudley, Easton Avenue and Bray Streets, Easton Avenue and Hamilton. This is the benefit to American Cancer Society of New Brunswick. Zero eight, authorize application acceptance and execution grant for 2013. New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Highway Traffic Safety, Fiscal Year 2013 Federal Highway Safety Grant. Zero nine, authorize application acceptance and execution grant for 2013. New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Highway Traffic Safety for Fiscal Year 2013 Pedestrian Safety Enforcement and Education Fund Grant. Ten, authorize submission of recycling tonnage grant application for 2011. Eleven, authorize certification of amount paid for Recycling Enhancement Act 2011 tax reimbursement, excuse me, to reimburse an amount of fifty-six thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. This is for three dollars per tonne tax paid on eighteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-six point five tonnes of solid waste. Twelve, approval word of contracts with Tries Incorporated, amount of three thousand. Jesco Incorporated, amount of ten thousand. Old Dominion Brush, the amount of nine thousand, Quality Start Trucks, amount of twenty thousand. And Norcia, Norcia Corporation, amount of six thousand for truck equipment replacement parts. Thirteen, approve amendment of resolution R-Dash-021111. Pay the final invoices for lease agreement with Susquehanna Commercial Finance. Doing business as Susquehanna Municipal Finance with Department of Public Works, not to exceed two hundred fifteen dollars and eighty cents. This change constitutes an increase of twenty percent or more of the original contract. Fourteen, approve request for street closing, sidewalk, pone, and use of city property requested by Salvation Army for congregation handing out tracts, singing, preaching, and celebrating the resurrection of Jesus Christ. Location Joyce Kilmer Avenue to Handy Street to Milwaukee and Wark Memorial Park. Requesting use of Wark Memorial Park. The date is Sunday, April 8th. Sidewalk time, 8:30 AM to 9:00 AM, report time, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Fifteen, approve request for street closing and use of city property requested by the James DeHare Memorial Foundation. Joyce Kilmer Avenue with Ninth Street to Seating Street to Joyce Kilmer Avenue to Memorial Park. Park locations, memorial stadiums for a five K run walk to benefit the James DeHare Memorial Foundation. Saturday, September 1st to Sunday, September 2nd. Saturday from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Sunday, 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The street closure will be Sunday from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Sixteen, approve request for street closing requested by St. Peter the Apostle Church. Somerset Street between College Avenue and George Street to provide parking for the Easter Ritual Mass. Saturday, April 7th, 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Seventeen, approve request for street closing by the New Brunswick Elks 324. Livingston Avenue between New and Mars, the annual Elk Ritual commemorating Flag Day. Thursday, June 14th, 11:30 AM to 12:30 PM. Eighteen, approve request for city, use of city property. Requested by the Center for International Faculty and Student Services in Rutgers University. Location ELO Park Pavilion and adjacent lawn areas for student picnic. Given by the International Student Organization at Rutgers University. Monday, August 27th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Nineteen, approve amendment of resolution R-Dash-121112. Reasons to award contract to the second lowest bidder, which is Fuddington Department Store for section, section four, police academy uniforms and accessories, and section five, police clerical civilian uniforms.
One company went out of business.
Twenty, approve amendment of resolution R-Dash-111112. Additional work required for rehabilitation home improvement for Duane and Maureen Fields. Fifteen, Quentin Avenue, New Brunswick, New Jersey, from twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars to twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty. This does not constitute an increase of twenty percent or more. Twenty-one, authorize extension of water supply agreement with Borough Milltown. January 1st, 2011 through December 31st, 2020. Twenty-two, approve award of contracts for various items with Barbado Nursery Corporation, amount of nine thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. Various items with Annie Mack for one thousand, three hundred dollars. And various items with Barton Nursery for three thousand, five hundred and fifteen for the furnishing delivery of trees for the spring tree planting program. Twenty-three, approve request for use of sidewalk for the Church of the Sacred Heart. Townsend Street to Commercial Avenue to Sedan Street to True Avenue. Palm Sunday Procession, Sunday, April 1st, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Twenty-four, approve person-to-person transfer of liquor license. Frog and Peach to F and P Associates trading as a Frog and Peach. Twenty-five, award professional service agreement, CFG Health Systems for New Brunswick Police Department Video Telepsychiatry Services for inmates. January 1st, 2012 ending December 31st, 2012, is included, being done on procton. Twenty-six, approve request for street and park closing. Requested by the Paul Robinson Community School. Street location, Comstock Street entrances to school parking lot. Park location, Feaster Park Basketball Courts, an area of the park that joins the school, free annual field day, and staff parking on Comstock Street. Date is Friday, June 15th, 8:45 AM to 2:30 PM, or a mandate of Monday, June 8th, Monday, June 18th. Twenty-seven, authorize intergovernmental contract with Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office for purchase and installation of street surveillance cameras. Twenty-eight, approve emergency temporary appropriation for 2012. Twenty-nine, approve transfer of appropriation reserves to 2011 Municipal Court. Thirty, approve temporary right-of-way encroachments requested by Burrisall Services Group in connection with the demolition of the Hopson Pavilion Project for loading trucks. Thirty-one, approve request for street closure and relaxation of noise ordinance requested by Nordic Contracting for extension of work dates for work harmony and process at the odd center, location in corner of George and New Streets. Thirty-two, for request for street closure and relaxation of noise ordinance requested by the industrial concrete construction in New Jersey for erecting a tower crane in connection with the project at the Arts Building. Street closure, new street between George and Nielsen. The date times to be determined. Do we have a date and time on this or no?
Yes, we, the dates are March 17th and March 18th. And ultimate dates are the 24th and 25th, or March 31st and April 1st.
Thirty-three, authorize lease agreement with Carperol Contracts Corporation for use of city property in connection with the Lyle Books Project. Thirty-four, authorize agreement with Middlesex County and the City of New Brunswick, New Brunswick Bike Way. Thirty-five, authorize transfer of insurance proceeds received from the Middlesex County Joint Insurance Fund to George Daff with amount of five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty cents. Thirty-six, authorize refund for 594 Jersey Avenue Associates due to 2012 tax overpayment against 594 Jersey Avenue, amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Thirty-seven, authorize into local services agreement with County of Middlesex for the Bronx Quick Shuttle Service. Terms, January 1st, 2012 to December 31st, 2012. Amount is one hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Mr. Councilman, you did that months ago.
That is, okay, so this will be the whole pull list. Thirty-eight, approve request from Rutgers University for the purple ribbon with flyer to attach advertising our use relay for life in Rutgers College against cancer. This is a, a request was made to place these purple ribbons on trees around the Rutgers College Avenue campus as part of the fight against cancer. So they'll be up, and according to the letter, they'll be up not as long as these dates, March 19th through 21st. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the real dates are March 25th to 31st. And that's it for resolutions. We have two items for discussion. First one is Givinelli's Restaurant, Easton Avenue, Captain Corridor, Southampton.
I call on Captain Mulligan to give us an update. The things have been, both of the quiet impressions, we couldn't, what I think have been working, but I know everybody's keeping an eye on it to see if there's any exceptions.
Captain, anything to add to that?
Yes, Mr. Council President, there's been nine calls for service since the beginning of February, and a majority of them were more vehicle stops or parked by. There's three disorderies, and appropriate establishments.
Thank you. The second one is, which we have is a resolution of these parade ordinance.
Mr. Shannon, can tell you why these work坊s have done a very good job. We were criticized about our parade ordinance by the ACU. And when we looked at it, we thought they were correct. And Mr. Shannon, if they proposed the ordinance before we came.
Mr. Shannon.
What the ordinance does is it makes a distinction between First Amendment speech and just commercial type of speech in connection with an assembly or a parade. And ordinance actually creates a distinction and it makes it easier for a First Amendment speech type of parade or gathering to gain approval through the city administration, similar to what other ordinances do in other towns in bigger cities. And it just provides the mechanism for that. The commercial types of parades remain pretty much the same with respect to the time needed for approval and insurance requirements. The First Amendment type of parade or gathering or march do not have the same type of requirements as the commercial speech type of gatherings. And it's spelled out in the ordinance.
We had to certainly expect to enforce the ordinance as it's now written, but this cleans up the language to conform the practice and the requirements a lot.
And that's it? Anything else? All right, meeting will come on board, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cook is absent. Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi. Council Vice President Escobar.
Here.
Council President Reese.
Here. Please be advised that notice requirements to the open public meeting have been complied with and satisfied in the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of time and place in contact with all public meetings in municipal council and filed with the city clerk to replace that approached bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall and has been transferred to the official newspaper, namely the Home News Tribune. Please will leave this place.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment, silence for those that have lost their horizon in the conflicts in the Middle East. Thank you. We have the meeting for February 15th.
Make motion for second minutes.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
We have ordinances on second reading. O-Dash-07-1109-1, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick. Solid waste collection and disposal. We're going to, we are, but what are we going to do with it? How do we get rid of it?
If you only do, you're going to have to vote for agenda, so we're just not doing anything on this.
I can do anything with it. This is for that solid, the solid waste moratorium ordinance that has been on and off for quite a while. We had some discussions with Rutgers University, who has been very cooperative and have worked out an agreement between the city and the university. Mr. Butler's here with, worked on this quite a bit, and I thank you for your efforts on that. If you could give us a summary and tell us what has been done and what has been agreed to, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Essentially, we're trying, rather than do the thirty-day moratorium, we're trying to build upon the existing ordinance. So the Department of Public Works will continue to collect as it always does by appointment with the limit of, I believe it's three pieces in addition to traditional trash. Since much of the problem that we were trying to resolve surrounds the university properties, we've been working with Rutgers, and they, as you said, they have been very helpful in assisting us in working through this problem. What they have agreed to do is for the last week of May, specifically this year, it's May 29th, 30th, the 31st, and then June 1st. Rutgers, by online registered appointment, by registered student. The student can call up, or I'm sorry, go online, ask for a pickup at their off-campus residence, and Rutgers will arrange for their contractor to go to that location and pick up an unlimited amount of bulk trash. So they obviously have to be registered students, and they have to register online. It can't be done by just a phone call in the morning of or something like that. And there will be an online voucher that gets sent to them that they can have, you know, for proof of their registration. Again, that's going to happen for those four days. In addition, during that same four-day time period, they're going to have, be kind, the College Avenue Gym, and on a location to be determined at Douglas Campus, they're going to have drop-off locations. So that in the event that you miss the online registration, you can go and drop off your bulk items for free. So those are the two, the two main ports that Rutgers is coming through with. In addition, the Department of Public Works on the Saturdays through that same time period, which I believe, I don't have the dates, yes, I do.
All Saturdays in March except, except Memorial Day.
Except Memorial Day, and then in addition, June 2nd. So that is May 5th, 12th, 19th, being off Memorial Day weekend, and then June 2nd. And they will have that free drop-off at 400 Jersey Avenue from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM. So again, this is an attempt to deal with the difficult problem that we've been confronting without having, or as an alternative to the thirty-day moratorium.
Now, also, I deserve to have some communication that gets a word out. Publicize this through Rutgers and the city.
Absolutely. The public information office at Rutgers and the public information office here, along with the rent control office, is going to come up with a common message and mode of getting information out. We've spoken with Rutgers, they believe they have a significant number of volunteers that can actually go and blanket the affected areas with lit drops.
Do you know if some items will be recycled or donated for, through some organization or anybody that had that, been not within GIs?
Well, recycled items will be dealt with by our pickup and Rutgers contractor in the way that it's supposed to be. So if they get refrigerants, they will deal with the capture of the refrigerants. If they're, if they're given washing machines and things like that, they'll make sure that they get recycled to aluminum recycling as opposed to going to the landfill. There is a hope that we can put together a program where people can exchange furniture. So if someone's moving out and they have a perfectly good couch, but they don't need it to where they're going, and someone else is moving into an apartment and doesn't have a couch, there may be an opportunity for an exchange. We have not worked that out yet. There's a lot on this already, there's a lot of moving parts on this already. We want to make sure that we get the bulk of the issue dealt with correctly this year. We may try and do that, but that is not in place at this point.
I gather that since this will be the first year we're all going to make changes or tweak them for whatever works best for us and the house and the residents throughout the coming time.
Absolutely. We're all looking at this as a pilot program. We hope that it's successful. Again, I'd like to, you know, thank the city staff as well as the Rutgers staff that's really, you know, gotten behind the issue, recognized what the issue was, and are putting a lot of resources into solving this, this problem. So yes, we're hoping that we're successful with the pilot, but in the event that, you know, we reassess after it, we may make some changes and suggest some changes for next year. My pleasure.
We're just going to let, this is, we're not going to do anything with this. O-Dash-021202, an ordinance to authorize conveyance of certain property to the parking authority of the City of New Brunswick. Mr. Hamilton, if this is, if we need to move this until next meeting?
Yes.
If I need a motion to set down.
Make a motion to set down March 21st for public hearing. Second.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. O-Dash-021203, an ordinance authorizing a guarantee by the City of New Brunswick and County of Middlesex State of New Jersey of not exceeding forty-eight million dollars in aggregate principal amount of city guarantees. Parking revenue refunding bond, series two zero one two A of the parking authority of the City of New Brunswick. Anyone wish to comment on this ordinance? Yes, name and address please.
Charles Cradwell, Patterson Street. I just wanted to know a couple things. So first of all, what is this bond for?
Mr. Craddles. Actually, this is a refunding bond that's being initiated by the parking authority. Actually, it's a series of four different bonds that are being aggregated together and refunded in this, this one ordinance, this one ordinance also, and also one bond refunding. It's for most of the parking decks, the older parking, not the city, older parking decks, but Electomore Street, all the other decks that were done, not necessarily the new projects, but older bonds that have been outstanding for a while. And the parking authority has the opportunity to save about 3.4 million dollars with this refunding. About 142,000 dollars a year. The city's role is only the guarantor, but we're already guaranteeing the bonds as it is, so we're just guaranteeing the refunding bonds.
And so, let me get this straight, we're paying back the loan, the bond?
It's similar to not redeeming, we're refunding the outstanding debt.
It's like refinancing.
Okay. I'll have to learn about that later, but I guess the other question is then, what is the total debt of the city and the parking authority?
I don't know if anybody has it in mind.
I don't have the annual debt statement in front of me, we can certainly get to that.
Yeah, we'll have to get it.
Okay. Next time, thank you. Anyone else?
Someone, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. O-Dash-021204, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick to clarify taxi cab fees. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? Mr. Cradwell.
Yes, Charles Cradwell, Patterson Street. How is this clarifying or fees?
We said at the earlier meeting, the ordinance would not reflect that the carriage of two or more people is 4.50, it says 3.50. In collecting 4.50, this is bringing the ordinance to the authority of what's out there in the street.
Thank you. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. O-Dash-021205, amendment supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick. Right turn on red prohibited George Street and Albany Street. Anyone wish to comment on this ordinance? Move the ordinance?
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. O-Dash-021206, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick. Traffic and parking delete two residential handicap parking zones. Barton Street and Townsend Street and add three residential handicap parking zones. Bartley, Townsend, and South Orange Streets. Anyone wish to comment on this ordinance? Move the ordinance?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. O-Dash-021207, an ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick. It's dealing with the records. Anyone wish to comment on this ordinance?
Mr. Cradwell. Charles Cradwell, same question. What does this do? What's the chase or how?
Now, the present ordinance says we can have one record per 6,000. Population is up to 48 or 49,000. It's also got a limit of seven. This changes the limit to eight in accordance to the population.
Anyone else? Move the ordinance?
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. Orders is on first reading. O-Dash-031201, an ordinance to authorize the sale of certain property of the City of New Brunswick to the housing authority of the City of New Brunswick.
I make a motion setting down March 21st for public hearing safety to be advertised.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. O-Dash-031202, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick. This is dealing with taxes, taxi cab license, these are the sale.
I make a motion setting down Wednesday, March 21st, and maybe the advertised, for public hearing.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. O-Dash-031203, an ordinance to amend and supplement revise general ordinances to the City of New Brunswick. O-Dash-031203, an ordinance to amend and supplement to revise general ordinance of the city of Brunswick. Doing a parade that Mr. Shamian, who was in the summary earlier.
I make a motion setting down March 21st for public hearing, say they could be advertised? Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Verlatti.
Aye.
Council President Reese Dean.
Aye. O-Dash-031204, an ordinance to grant easement over Portwood Martin Street, the city of Brunswick.
I make a motion setting down March 21st for public hearing, say they could be advertised? Second.
Roll call.
Who's second?
Goodbye.
Thank you. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Verlatti.
Aye.
Council President Reese Dean.
Aye. We have resolutions, R-Dash-031201 to R-Dash-031238, we're pulling 03N37. Anyone wish to comment on any of these resolutions?
Mr. Cradwell?
Yes, Charles Menzel Harvey Street. Our resolution 220. We just had a flyer, flyer in mail today from Glenn Patterson's department indicating that I thought that these kinds of applications were anonymous, and that the persons who requested these kinds of restorations or rehabilitations would not be a demo project. This seems to be the habit of the council to identify them in the resolution itself. Am I mistaken, or is that a different kind of resolution?
Mr. Menzel is mistaken. They are always public as to who are giving the loans to. They regularly come through the council agenda when we make the award or if there are any changes to the contract, the property is identified.
When we make the word, do you have to identify or acquire to that or not? Or does that make any difference?
No, I mean, it's, who owns a property is public record. I mean, you can call the tax office and look it up, you can go on the home news and look it up, who owns a particular property. That's not private information.
The flyer that I got, I believe, referred to this program, and it clearly, I didn't bring it because I didn't believe it was this purpose.
Do you recall the flyer?
Yeah, I know the flyer went out. I'm not aware of anything on there that says the information is held in conflict. You have to provide your tax statements and so forth in order to become income qualified. That is not released, but in order to get it, we have to place a lien on the property. That lien is gonna be filed in the, with the county clerk. That's all a matter of, of public record.
Charlie, do you sense, kind of, if we could take a look at it?
Yeah, well, I'll take another look at it myself, and if I'm wrong, I'll certainly apologize. My goodness, I wouldn't want to accuse Glenn Patterson.
No apology, sir, Mr. Menzel.
But if I'm right, I'll, I'll push to the nth degree. Okay, moving on to 235. Has the route been designated yet for the bike way that the county's going to be going under this program? Pat?
Yes, it has. I'm not familiar with exactly every turn, but essentially it comes down College, George, Albany, over to Nielsen, down to Bishop, and then back over to George Street.
Will it be on one side of the road? Will at one time it talk about the median of Albany Street? Will it be left turn, right turn? Will it be protection for bikes who are traveling in the traffic or turning against it, that sort of thing?
For most of the length, it is a dedicated bike lane, which means it will be a dedicated area in the street for a bike lane approximately five feet wide. There are a couple of places, because of the narrowness of the road, will be made into what's called a class three bike lane, where you have sharrows. For example, on Nielsen Street, where it pinches there by the, by the synagogue, but for the vast majority of it, it will be what's called a class two lane, where you have a dedicated bike lane in the street marked as such.
Can he identify the lanes, the direction, sorry, the location? For example, I assume it's on the north side of Albany Street and on the east side of Nelson Street, and what side of College Avenue?
On both sides.
It's on both sides? So will it be parking?
Yeah. This is a county project. I'm not familiar with all the, there may be a few spaces that are lost because they are doing a lot of intersection improvements to it, but most, the roads they're doing it on, for the vast majority of the, of the length of it, have room to provide a dedicated lane without removing the parking. On Albany Street, for instance, they will be narrowing the median strip in the middle of the road so that they have an extra couple of feet to be able to put in the bike lane there while maintaining the, the on-street parking.
That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you very much. I talked for a minute.
Anyone else? Mr. Cradwell?
Yes, also on the O-31234, the bike lane, when is this happening? Do they give us the date?
They intend to make application with the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority for funding again. And the agreement that's on the table today is an agreement between the city and the county on who's gonna maintain elements of the bike way once it's constructed.
And, uh...
I can't, I can't give you a...
We don't have an exact date.
Other than they're trying to get the funding back in this current, I should say fiscal year, but trying to get it back in what they call the tip, which is maintained and evaluated by the North Jersey Planning, Transportation Planning Authority.
Might want to give a call over to the county planning department. Georgia brought readings, I think. I am, so now you can call over there.
You know if you can call.
So can you?
I know, I can, maybe we both call. I don't know. So, so the details of the agreement, who is going to maintain the thing?
Both, both parties, actually three parties will be, will be maintaining different elements of the bike way. The DOT has jurisdiction over certain traffic signals. The city will maintain the bike way on city streets, and the county will maintain the bike way on county portions of the road.
Goes with where, has the responsibility, the street has, has it as an avenue?
Yes, and all of the traffic signals that are along this route need to be rebuilt with current handicap accessibility standards and stuff. The agreement, almost not exclusively, but speaks an awful lot of who's maintaining the traffic signals before and after construction.
Anyone else on any of the resolutions? Say no to move the resolutions?
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Verlatti.
Aye.
Council President Reese Dean.
Aye. Any correspondence?
Yes. Yeah. Item number one is a notice from a law firm of Wolf Sampson regarding a resatir evaluation form for 760 Jersey Avenue. Item number two is a received copy of a preliminary equalization table from the county of Middlesex for the year 2012. That's it.
That's it. Anyone on the council wishes to address the public? Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Scradwell?
Charles Cradwell, 86 Patterson Street. Wanted to start out my remarks tonight by reading something I read in the paper, February 17th. "New Brunswick Police Liaison Asked Protesters to Offer Suggestions for Improving Relations." And this is a quote from the community liaison, who I guess could not be here tonight. She said, "We have created foot patrols and auxiliary police. We have improved our website, but nobody says those are good things." Nice to meet you, I'm nobody. I commended the city on all three of those things, and I think it's really not fair for a person who's supposed to be a community liaison, who I think is a very nice person...
I'm getting a little nitpicky on this, Mr. Cradwell. Sorry. Don't take everything so personal.
It's not personal. It's not personal. What it is, is it's an abdication of the responsibility of this body, and saying that it's the job of these people to come up with the solutions. It is not.
It is, it is. They're part of the public and have a responsibility and participate.
I, you know that I am one for constructive solutions being brought by the public, but it is ultimately the responsibility of the city to come up with the solutions, as you did with the garbage law. We, we came out and we did what, what our role was, and then you guys did what your role was. And I'm not seeing that happen with the police issues. I brought along with a couple of Democrat committee people, four proposals, written, ready to adopt proposals to this body. So I don't think it's really fair for the community liaison to be speaking to the press and saying that the community is not coming up with solutions. We are. We're doing the best we can, and I, I can't say the same of, of the city. Fair enough. I, I noticed that after I mentioned the out-of-date meeting schedules were posted in the downstairs, that, that some of them were updated, and that's a good thing. But I also noticed that now the one for this body is missing. There is no...
The which ones?
The meeting schedule of when you guys are meeting this year.
Oh, that's in the lobby.
It is not posted in the lobby. The agenda for tonight's meeting is, so I'm not sure if that satisfies the Open Public Meetings Act.
Can we get that posted? I'm sure it's posted. If not, can you post it?
Maybe, maybe I'm losing my mind, but I checked several times.
Well, if it's not, we'll get it up there in the sky.
I wanted to ask about the auxiliary police, which is, again, one of these things that I've said I support and I'm glad we're moving ahead with. How many folks are in the academy training now?
Academy?
I believe, and I'm not certain, that there are nine recruits left. One under showed, one left at the lunch, so we're down to nine.
Still a step in the right direction. I also wanted to ask about a former employee of the police department, Mr. Farizoli. I believe he resigned two weeks ago now, and that sort of coincided with some charges being brought against in Somerset County. Does the city have any comment on that? I've reached out to the public information officer and not heard back.
Actually, guys gave my attention today. From what I understand, there was some criminal charges, drug charges filed in Somerset. He resigned, but he looked back at the time, assuming he did, that's why he resigned. He was a civilian employee in the garage. But other than that, I don't really have any comment. That's what's going on. He's guilty of that, but the lady's gone.
Can you tell me this? Did he have any access to those vehicles? That he was, he was in charge of the fleet, I understand? Did he get like a, for lack of a better term, was a company car? Did he have a...
No.
No, he did not?
As far as I know, he did not. He didn't have a company car.
As far as the city website goes, again, that's something I'm glad to see is moving forward, but there are, you know, a few things that took a step back with the upgrade. So like, for instance, I know committee woman Yolanda Baker really pushed hard to get the minutes of this body posted to the city website. Those are no longer a part of the city website. I'd like to see that changed. And also, the, for this particular meeting, the upcoming agenda was, it may have been posted in the downstairs, but...
It's still linked, it's on, we gotta, we gotta link it below.
Okay. And two transportation issues I wanted to talk about. The Morris Street, has been talked about that switching from being a one-way, the way it is now, to being a one-way, the other way. Is that gonna happen?
Mr. Golden, do you know what came to me?
Yeah, we've submitted it to the county and to get their input, and they have more or less agreed to change. So at this point, we just need to come up with a funding, our capital budget.
Is that gonna take away the parking that's on South Towne Street?
No, it will not.
Is she wide enough for two-way plus the parking?
No, no, it's not two-way. Instead, we'll have a one direction, we won't make it...
And then, the last thing was, it was pulled from the agenda, but the New Brunswick Shuttle. I think that's a great thing that the city is doing, and I just don't like the name. The, the name, it might work, but it's confusing because there's a Middlesex County shuttle with the same name that runs up to Jersey Avenue. And maybe not a lot of people are confused, but I think that if we cleared that up, it might help increase the ridership. And I raised this idea, the Rutgers Department of Transportation for over a year now, and not gotten anywhere. So maybe you guys could help me out and try to get either one of the two shuttles to change their names, so we don't have two competing shuttles in the same area that do different things with the same name.
So Patterson, I see you standing?
It's intentionally all called the same name because we're trying to make it all part of the same system. There are actually three shuttles. One that goes through the fifth, sixth ward, another that goes through the second and fourth wards, and another shuttle that goes from downtown out Jersey Avenue to the, to the industrial area. And the intention is to designate them, not the intention, but they are all designated as Brunswick shuttles.
So they're all supposed to be under one, one umbrella?
Yeah, we have one, two of the shuttles are funded with the county, and the one that runs in the fifth, sixth ward is done with Rutgers. We've done it that way so that we can share the costs and that the, so the city is paying less of the cost burden for it, but it's to create a coordinated shuttle system where all the shuttle routes cross over each other. You can transfer from one shuttle to the other.
I think that's a great initiative, but we're not there yet because if you go downstairs, there's one bus that's called the Brunswick Loop, and then the other two don't have that name on their marketing literature. So if we're gonna make them all Brunswick, that's one thing, and I think we can maybe differentiate, call one the Brunswick Jersey Avenue, the Brunswick this, or the Brunswick that, but just having four shuttles that are called Brunswick doesn't really make it easy.
Okay.
And just one last thing, I noticed the first reading we passed, the housing authority's gonna sell some properties, is it?
Now, that, that is an exchange of property in connection with Zebra Way, which is the second access road into the new high school. The road is already built, and the recording of the deed was omitted. That's all that matters.
Second. Yes, sir, name and address, please?
Name is Arden, Anthony Williams, 15B Hampton Road. At our last meeting, I gave the administration a copy of this track program that, which I gave to them, which was blank.
Can you take the last one, please?
Sure. Which the city administra, I mean, your city attorney said that we came to this program and borrowed money, and we did not. Now, here it is, yet I haven't heard anything from that yet. Second of all, I have wrote to the rent control board, I have wrote to the inspection board about, I want violation from 205 up to 207. Now, when you first got up, I heard y'all swearing to the flag for justice for all, but so far, I haven't got no justice. They keep siding with these con artists that stole my identification, and you can go over to Judge Pika's office and she would tell you that stuff never took place, but yet your city attorney said that we gave y'all a false deed, which my deed was the original deed. The other people had the false deed, but yet they didn't, they weren't charged. We got hit with the Jim Crow law, that we were denied, they didn't even have to come to court. The second time, they run me in this mock court, him and Gayton, and deny me again to confront these people. I want to know, the $152,000 these people got away with, why is the city attorney and Gayton are covering up for these people? And why can't they answer my question? They give me a letter saying, here go pictures, here go violations from 2010, but they took the pictures in 2008. My man, there, his, and his voice. But yet, they won't give me no pictures, they won't give me no violations from 2005 up to 2007, where they would see the same violations that I got stuck with, which I, I got a letter where the city attorney and Gayton telling them to make sure that I get stuck with the violations, make sure that the place is contaminated. Then, why ain't Angelo Fan and Deli Home being charged for that? Because all that stuff was there when they stole my identification and ripped me off with bait fraud, with the help of the city attorney and Gaten and the city inspectors. They helped them get away with it. I got proof and facts. I only gave you the proof on the one. I got proof for the rest of them. I even, y'all can go over to Judge Pika's office. She would tell you it never took place in her courtroom. So, how in the world is your city attorney helping these crime artists get away with all this? I wanna answer this. I wanna know who got that hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. That's rightfully my money. That was my house. I built that house. That was my equity. I did not sell my house to nobody. They stole my identification. I didn't know anything about it until they sent this crook up here that ripped the city off for sixty-five hundred dollars, which I gave to you, whi- which is proof. And I never hired that guy. They did. And then he came there and crossed the wires up. And then they turned around and came back, him and the rest of them came there and felt it, said the jo- job ain't no good. But yet, they, but they paid.
Mr. Hamble, if, if Mr. Williams will give us his questions and writing...
I will do that.
Let him finish, please?
Yeah, thank you, because you're part of it.
Let him, please?
Yes.
Let him finish? I'll be happy to give you and him, uh, a response to the questions, but please make them as specific as they can be, so I know what it is being sought. Is that fair?
That's very fair. I will bring facts.
Okay, that's fine.
And meanwhile, on the first part, I already gave them the first facts.
Okay, but so you'll give us, when you, the city attorney had questions and he'll ask them and we'll, uh, try to get the...
I will do that. You got that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Rambler?
Charles Rambler, Harvey Street. Um, first of all, I want to commend you on the, uh, the trash collection and disposal ordinance and working that out. Um, I just, I just wanna know whether or not it's planned or thought or possible that there will be more strict enforcement of homeowners after, if tenants don't call and still dump the garbage.
Yeah, the tax, the original ordinance, if it's not closed now, we'll stay in the sector. Part of that would be to get somebody's communication, we get to work out that that's the ordinance is, that's the kind of rule we enforce. And we're also looking to, to look into the fines that, um, the families, the people that are, um, that just ignore this disorder. So, that's not, not yet.
Well, it's been my impression that generally landlords aren't really hit up that hard or that heavily. And many of these absentee landlords may not know that despite your efforts to publicize it, and it's the tenants who are really responsible. Is there any thought given to how to hit up tenants rather than the landlords? I just...
Yeah, we're, we're, that's part of what we're looking to, into for the fine part.
You're looking into it, you're working to it.
Yeah.
All right, and the other thing, of course, you know that I always ask that you have, uh, on your ordinance as a first reading, you give us a little more information so we can figure out what the heck you're talking about, passing the first ordinance, first reading. Uh, and in connection there with first, I'll go to number 204. I wanna know what you're doing to my street.
On the, on the, on the, there, Mr. Hamble? Somebody, 234, um, Somerset has an application and it's an existing, one court approach, and it's right away your party's being sued. So, we're dealing with a need to...
Where is 234?
You both may worry about it either.
I don't know my number.
Oh. Number's on the house. I had it on the...
Well, I'll go look, Mr. Hamble. Uh, all right.
I'll give you the owner's name if you want.
It's the Buddha.
Oh, we don't see, we don't see the ordinances before you pass them on first reading. Oh, the Buddha bar, okay, yeah. I know where you're talking about. The other question was on 202. What is going, what's being changed for taxes?
We, we had authorized 45 licenses, we were about 43, we saw, we're into the final two up for auction, the minimum price, the third. Up to go up to a minimum price.
Is the minimum price what changes? Because you had already authorized the sale of these extra licenses.
That didn't go through. If you remember, they were, they were bid in and not closed by the people. People sued us, lost their lawsuit, and we are now going to re-author those to sale under the procedure that we used the last time, which is now sanctioned by statute.
I recall that, but the, so the original ordinance expired? Is that what you're saying?
No, the original ordinance authorized the sale of, of, of the licenses, and it didn't go through. The saying again, 44 and 45 will be offered for sale. It'll be the public folks who will go in detail. Is it, Mr. Hamble, was it the, the 44 and 45 people bid on it? And they closed, and they had to close on it. So, everything was meant for that previous ordinance. Since the people didn't close, it's definitely effective.
So, essentially, what's changing is this ordinance authorizes a new date for the auction of those two licenses. Is that correct?
In the simplest terms, uh, yeah.
Thank you, very much.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Name and address?
Um, my name's Eric Stroud, I live in the Fifth Ward. Um, I have, I wanna, A, say thank you very much for, I think that the, uh, trash ordinance is a great improvement on the original proposal. I really appreciate the, like, working with Rutgers University. I think it's an incredible improvement. Um, I just wanna say thank you to the body in large. I don't know which individual would be named responsible, or, but, um, it really touched me to have this moment of silence for the Iraq war still in there. I know that Councilman Valentin was the first person to move for that.
You get thanked on that, but...
I was part of it, and I really appreciate that it's still being on. I really do appreciate that.
And one other thing since you mentioned it, or is you still, are you still, did you rat him?
I did.
Did you rat him, so I can ask you?
I'm still a city resident, though, and I have a job now, too. So, I'm better than most in my career.
You can spread the word with the, uh, as soon as they let you off campus.
I will, I will definitely part of the effort. I'll definitely, I'll call the state government president tonight. There's a lot of people who definitely want that. I think that's great. The only thing about that is it's at the end of the month, and a lot of people will move out in the first two weeks. But I think that we can find ways to work with that, and I was happy that you brought up that you want your opening interpretation of what you have so far. It's a work in progress. I think that's great. Um, my question, I mean, like, obviously, I have a lot of reservations about the, what's going on with the police department, especially in the last eighteen months. I think there's been a lot of negative publicity. I think there's been efforts made to, um, ammunerate that. I hope that we continue to get updates and we talk about how this police auxiliary, is it really solving the problem? Is it not? I hope that we continue to hear about that and, and keep that for discussion amongst the council and everybody. And the thing that I wanna ask your question about, um, I don't have the ordinance number, but I'm sure somebody can find it. Um, can somebody look, tell me a little bit more about the surveillance camera program and what the intentions are? The one that said, the first reading, I think, right?
Capital and, I mean, the cameras, I guess, are granted for prosecutor's office. How many cameras, uh, location?
What is the intention to use it for? Who's gonna be watching them? That's what I'm asking.
The, uh, the camera project is a joint collaboration between the prosecutor's office and Rutgers. Prosecutor's office provided the funding, Rutgers provided the installation. Uh, we don't have an exact number yet. It's still a work in progress. The target is the Unity Square area or the, uh, Troup Avenue and Resin Avenue corridor, but a lot of the specifics aren't worked out yet.
The question's here.
Can, can I second the question that just, will this be more of like an after the fact sort of thing?
Here, though.
I'm s- I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Underpoint.
Will, will the, will the camera be for, um, sort of recording what happens and then being able to use it as evidence so that you can for better police? Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Name and address, please?
Tom Melpitt, St. Street. Um, I just wanna piggy, piggyback off what Charlie, uh, said earlier about the, uh, you know, it's the community's responsibility, basically saying, to recognize the problem in the city. And it's also the community's responsibility to come up with a solution.
That's not what I said.
No, that's, I'm saying, that's what I heard. My thing is, why do we have elected officials?
No, the point is to have input from the community.
Input are coming from...
I say, have the community should give solutions. And I apologize if I was misunderstood, but we need the back and forth. We need the suggestions from the community are helpful.
Right. Also, um, I raised a question last meeting about, uh, the issue of no New Brunswick police officer ever being promoted within the department that wasn't a campaign contributor to Medicaid. I just like to know, is there any validity to that?
I don't know.
Okay, is there, can we get an investigation to find out if there's any validity to that?
Uh, there are public records that show who gave the campaigns. They can be looked at, they'll be available by, uh, asking the appropriate officer on those, or if you make a comparison.
Okay. Well, say if I was to do the homework, which you guys are not willing to do, and I come up with the fact that there is validity to there's never been an officer promoted within, uh, the campaign, I mean, within the police department, then would you guys, of course, that we have immediate, uh, federal or state, uh, supervision within the New Brunswick Police Department?
No.
If I were you?
I don't see a reason to do that, based on that.
And they have, you have to remember, Mr. Fitman, that also that's, they have to take a test. So, if, so if they haven't taken the test, half of them are promoted. So, they have to take a state test to be promoted, promoted into sergeant or captain or lieutenant. There's a process. It's not just a state, okay, you could go out and...
Yes, it's, it's not like a point of justice or point, they have to test, civil service test.
Well, you know what, or...
I know.
But I, I, if, if I'm not mistaken, certain officers are put in a position that they get leeway to be able to study for that test, while certain officers don't get that same type of... Uh, I mean, I'm doing my homework, I'm not just going to question you. You're likely to be doing my homework.
An officer can study as much as he wants, on as long time, as much as he wants, take advantage of any opportunities that are there.
But it's different than for a detective and a patrolman. A patrolman is monitored. A detective has more leeway.
Well, I, I don't know if that's a hundred percent...
I'm telling you, it's a hundred percent.
It's a serious, maybe, that's a hundred percent.
All right, I'm, my last question is, um, I got you, I got an anonymous call from a person that, uh, runs a business downtown in Brunswick. And he made me aware that ninety percent of, uh, restaurants and the nightclub life and the establishments downtown are being allowed to operate without the proper sprinkling system. And I'm not sure if that's a fact, but, but if, I know, I'm, I'm ordering my NFPA, uh, booklets to find out if there's any validity to that issue, too. And if there is, would there be some immediate intervention?
Well, there should be. There should be by law, um, so I'm gonna take, so I'm gonna ask them.
Well, you can give me a list of restaurants, I'm gonna give you what is in most of the restaurants downtown or sprinkled. Okay?
Okay.
So, if you give me a list of what those are, I'll look into it.
Well, I'm actually, I'm in the process of putting an investigation together.
If you have, yeah, you have the list of that, this is the, that you would call it. Don't ask them what you're getting to them, and you'll get it straight away.
You got, uh, and then there will be immediate intervention.
Oh, yes, there will be immediate intervention.
Yeah, ask it now.
Okay.
If you give me those names and those addresses, I'll look into it right away.
Sounds good. Also, my last thing is, um, with the changes within the police department, I also agree that auxiliary police can be a plus. I also believe there's a, uh, program called Buy Your Guns Back, like Sell Your Guns or something like that, that's gonna be implemented, where, uh, people can turn in their guns for money. My question is, um, what is being done about the conduct of the officers? Everything that, you know, I, that's, that's, uh, guaranteeing the safety of the civilians and community. But what is being done to guarantee the safety of civilians from the police officers?
Well, Mr., I think everything has been done on a case-by-case basis and, and as has been well publicized with the Trump. We have the Internal Affairs, that has been worked on. It was in a press release that there are now three officers in Internal Affairs plus cooperation with the prosecutor's office, which is one of the steps that I hope addresses your concern about that.
So, yeah, three officers in internal affairs.
Excuse me?
Yeah, yeah, which is, I didn't get your last...
There were three, three officers who are now in charge of Community Affairs, whereas before it was the one. There was a sergeant, I think, two sergeants and one lieutenant, captain. That are now doing Internal Affairs as opposed to the one officer in the four.
Okay.
So, you've increased the number there. We also have cooperation with the prosecutor's office. And overseeing, hopefully, a more open, um, process. And, and again, I know you, we have the, uh, our liaison officer, Miss Gaten, so hopefully that'll help with that, too.
I'm saying three officers, but you can have ten officers. My thing is the quality of the officers. That's, that's, that's...
I think you have to give them a chance. We'd have to see. I don't, I don't know how you give, how you say that they're good, bad, or indifferent prior to how you do the job. We have a bad track record, they've done already.
You have a bad track record, you say give them a chance.
If they, no, I didn't say, if they have a bad track record, I'd have to leave you in that position.
And also, you raised, uh, you mentioned the community liaison. She's been a community liaison, if I'm not mistaken, since October. Um, I don't know, I, I haven't seen a pamphlet, a website, is there any documentation stating where someone... I know she has a position, but the community hadn't get, didn't get any type of information on her, about her position, or where they could top contact her, or phone number, any.
All right, well, I'm, I'm pretty sure the number's been out there, but I'd like to see if we can make it a little better, get publicity a little further. Do you understand you're supposed to meet with her as well?
Uh, yeah, the fourteenth.
And that's set already? You got that set?
Yeah.
Good. Um, so maybe we can get, I, if it's not on a website, it should be on a website.
No, because my concern is maybe something will happen tonight. You know, you can't wait for me to meet with her the fourteenth.
I didn't say that. I never said that.
Like, what is that, address? Do you have an address?
No, if we have, we have it here. We have it available right now. Do you have some phone number for her?
I don't have a phone number.
She gave that information the last time.
Yes, I know she did.
August, that was on Thursdays in her office. That's when she said. I don't, you weren't here when she gave the information about the times that she's available? She gave that on the last meeting. I don't know if you heard her when she did all the information.
So, just to be safe, I mean, maybe you guys have something next meeting also, just, you know, sure, we can have it available. Damn, you can know that, so...
And that's also, just so you know, they say, eh, police, a sergeant who's in charge, he's the deputy DA, so also in the police department.
Sergeant Bull?
Sergeant Bull.
Bull? I wouldn't trust Ms. Paul to control him. I can't even pick him up.
Okay, all right. All right, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Reverend, good afternoon. Reverend Marshall, uh, um, Commercial Avenue. With the community liaison, um, is she out with the community? Or is she contacting anyone from the community? Because I, I haven't heard anything, and I do call myself one of the community leaders.
I, I don't know if she has it, but I don't think that's a good idea, and I'm, I'll talk to her about that. Be a little more proactive, is that...
Yes, um, I know her from...
Right.
Being here, but I haven't seen her in the community.
We'll see if we can get a little more proactive.
Okay, that's number one. Number two. Who is going to, when, um, you said about the community, um, that we're supposed to give information to the police on how to help in the community?
This is it, a little, my point is that if somebody has to suggest or say anything with better relations, then we would like to hear. If you wanna give it to Ms. Gaten, that's fine. If you wanna give it to Sergeant Bull, that's fine. If you wanna present it to the council, that's fine. Or, or, or just part of the result, that's fine. All I'm saying is that it'd be beneficial to both sides if you get input from both sides. I'm not, I, if I was misunderstood in saying that I think the public ought to tell us what to do, then I apologize for that. That wasn't my point. My point is to get the cooperation of what the public thinks is a good idea, as well as what would be beneficial for both.
Okay, number three. The signs that you have in I've seen on Joyce Kilmer and, I believe, Livingston Avenue, where is these big signs with the cross, the crosswalk?
Back to schools, you mean?
Yes.
It's an SGM, or something.
Yes. Um, who do I speak to about getting one for Nielsen Street?
I think Mr. Bull and you can speak with our engineer. He said, they, they say after the meeting would be helpful.
Yes, because, um, I spoke to, um, I can't think of...
My senior, my, my, I don't see you in...
No, the, the Neil, all Nielsen from, uh, from...
Commercial.
Commercial Avenue.
See.
Uh, not New Street, but the next one.
The next one coming, probably, down?
Yeah, coming towards, it's, from the end, it's a one-way street. And then, where, where I'm at, it's two-way. But when they come up on Route Eighteen, and they come around there, and they're, they speed.
Cut through, right, from Eighteen and Commercial?
Yes, and, um, a few months ago, we did have a machine out, you know, for the speeding. But they see that a half a mile away, so when they get there, they slow down. And I've stood there, you know, on the corner, and I've seen them come up, and then it goes down to like sixteen, eighteen miles an hour. And soon as they pass that, they go right back to speeding. But we have school buses that stop there on Nielsen Street. Um, a lot of the children from the high school and the elementary. And during certain times of the day, Nielsen Street is very dangerous.
Mr. Bull is here. If you want, it's a little more after the meeting, it's not long, but, um, to the show, it's there as well.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I just, I have one more question. It's a general question. It's not a gotcha question. I really want your opinion. I really wanna know, I'm Eric Stroud from the Fifth Ward. Um, given the fact that there have been several incidents that have come up in the last eighteen months, there's like a lawsuit, there was a couple indictments of officers, and, um, the, the Middlesex County Sheriff, like the actual county sheriff, the highest, like, law enforcement officer...
Prosecutor.
No, like, the sheriff, um, was, was in, was in, uh...
You're talking about...
I'm talking about Spicuzzo, Joseph Spicuzzo, was, under my understanding, who's been in, uh, been in power for a very long time. He was like twenty-five years, right? Something like that, over two decades. And he was arrested for, I mean, the accusation, it's not, it's not been proven yet, but the accusation by the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office is that he was handing away a promotion for twenty-five thousand dollars cash in a brown giver bag or something out of a movie. And given the issues that have come up in the police department, all the questions you're getting from the public, I just wanna know, any councilperson, what is your honest explanation? Do you, do you believe that this is just a bunch of individuals who happen to be coming to light at this moment, acting by themselves? Or do you think that, you know, is there, is there a problem of attitude? Or what is leading it that all these things are, are coming to light now? Has there always been that many problems in a given, like, calendar year or two? Or is, what do you attribute the problems to?
Well, personally, I attribute to what you said originally, is first, people take responsibility for their own actions. Um, I don't know if you have any difference between similar forces of the same size and similar-sized town cities. That I don't know, and I can't answer, but, um, I'm a firm believer that people have to take responsibility for what they do.
You don't think it comes to the top, though?
I don't think you should generalize, um, on any of other police officers that go to work every day and put their lives on line and do their job. and do their job, and do their jobs well.
A lot, a lot of people do their job, but why now?
I, I can't answer why now. I don't know why now. I wish I knew. If I knew, we wouldn't have any of these problems. No one else would either.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You have comments on the name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Kenneth Timely. My address is Facebook. But, my first question is, that you always ask people to do certain things, like to be respectful, when they stand up towards this council. But yeah, people on the council can slump, turn, frown, make faces, look up at the ceiling, or whatever they wanna do, but no one does anything to them, like, like him for instance, uh, Mr. Hamilton, right? His name, Mr. Hamilton. Uh, like when he would speak to Nate, he'd say, "You, I'll give it to you." And then you, but you asked Nate to say his name, so why are we saying our name if you're gonna address us as you?
Have I addressed anybody as you?
I said you don't correct people when they do it, and I'm asking you, why is that being done? But yet you tell Nate, "Take your glasses off."
If I haven't corrected, I apologize. It's something that I just didn't catch.
But I, okay.
I try to have as much respect for you as I want you to have. I mean, I think I have. And if I haven't, I apologize, I say anybody got disrespect, but I don't think I have.
I'm talking about not you, I'm talking about other members of the council. They're not, like, last week, you, last week you were here, and the other lady, she was slumping, and she didn't say anything. I had to say something, because the lady's just sitting there, like this. I mean, I guess because if you're not voting on this here council or at this table, you could do what you wanna do. And that's how they feel. Like him being like, I don't vote him in his position, so he can, he can care less how I feel. And he shows it.
What, what kind of way?
Let's handle it, let's handle it, please. I don't know how I'm offending him.
I'll try to cure that.
I do.
That's what I was gonna get to, and we'll take these up.
I mean, you could, you could cure it by pretending that you're interested.
That's just how it is.
Okay, okay. That's how you can cure. Now, my father's name is Joe Timely, so I understand what's going on here. And most of y'all should, anybody with any importance should know who my father was. So I understand how you do, how you treat us and whatever, but all I'm saying is you can't demand respect and then don't give it. And, and everybody here is too intelligent to act like they don't see that happening. You know, like, if I made a mistake, yes, that's what you need to say. Yes, all right, I apologize. But you're, 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 you're the city, what, you're the city.
Attorney, the city attorney.
So you know the law, so you know what you ain't gotta do, and what you have to do, and if I don't do it, so what?
Mr. Timely, I think you got the point, Mr. Gould.
All right, all right, all right, all right. All right, so the other point is, I understand that you're putting cameras on Trupe Avenue, Brinson Avenue, and it's being helped sponsored, I guess, by Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. And there seems to be a surveillance problem going on in this area. I mean, as us being protesters, we out here with kids, and, and we being surveilled and filmed and followed, and then you got, uh, Rutgers being spied on, and then we can't get no answers here. But New York can say what's going on, Newark can say what's going on, but when it comes to New Brunswick, we ain't gonna talk about what's going on. But it started here, it started here by getting caught here on June the second, two thousand nine. A janitor broke this all open, so how could we be excused from this? And why come here, we're not even trying to address this? What, what is the delay of this?
What is, what is it that you're asking?
All right, well, what, the main question I'm asking, who recommended that we should be surveilled or filmed as protesters with kids? Who, who made that decision? And why aren't we being addressed on why is it happening to us?
The only, I, I don't know, I assume, and I probably shouldn't assume, I would think that.
Well, you got an officer back there.
I, I know. I would think that it came from as part of police proceedings.
Well, usually when it comes to police, then you ask them to say something, so he needs to say something.
I will, I, I will.
Sorry.
Mr. Timely, if you give me a chance.
Well, you said you don't have an answer. So let's say we have an answer. We don't need to waste people time.
Mr. Timely, didn't you just talk about respect?
Yes, I did.
Can you give me some respect and let me finish?
Go ahead.
Thank you. What I was going to say is I was giving you my answer, and I know that the officer's here, and I will ask him if you would give me a chance, so respect, as you said, goes both ways, sir. Captain Milligan, the decision to film the video tape or during any protest, that police proceedings that comes from our director or ops and operating procedure?
It would be both. Um, then there can be no mistaking as to what the facts of the situation were, it's all on film. I mean, we do it every day during normal police operations with the MBRs and RRs. It's no different with a handheld recorder.
So he said you do it every day?
Why would the cars have cameras in them?
Which car?
The whole cars.
Because I was told all cars don't have cameras in them.
Do all cars have, you know, how many do you?
Most of the mark units have MBRs. The ones that don't are slated to get them very shortly, as soon as the vendor gets the product.
Well, all, all the cameras working properly? Yes.
No.
No.
So we still didn't get a explanation why we're being monitored?
It's for protection of both you and the officer and the state law operators.
To protect both of us? Well, you have any threats being made against us that you know about that you're not telling us?
No.
Because even the FBI has to tell them.
I just said no, I don't know that any threats can come, so.
I also want to know, which one of you are elected officials, and how long are you supposed to be in the seat? And when is your time up?
The four of us sitting here are elected officials, myself and Ms. Garlotta are December, are, ended term, this term is December thirty-first of this year. Mr. Regan and Ms. Escobar were elected, um, two thousand ten and runs into two thousand fourteen.
So next year, we'll be voting for your presence.
Correct, and Mr. Coe, who's not here tonight.
Yeah, what happened to him?
He's had some personal health issues, because.
He disappeared.
Yes, that's his personal health issue, I'll be glad that. Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, back. Um, spoke once, need me to speak? You wanna speak, sir?
No, I don't want to speak.
I just have a. Sure.
Um, you're putting, they're putting surveillance cameras in the area of Brinson Avenue, Trupe Avenue, in those areas, like, for the protection of both the community and the officers. Um, I'm from New Brunswick, one of those, went through the school system, there's a business downtown. And I know that there's just as much, I guess, you know, there's a lot of drug dealing, and whatever going on on Brinson Avenue, Trupe Avenue, but there's just as much on Eastern Avenue and those surrounding areas. Now, the difference is, the reason it's not reflected that way is because the police officers that are on Brinson Avenue and Trupe Avenue, they jump out, and they do a, a Terry pack, they jump out, they assault, I mean, harass these certain individuals. But on Eastern Avenue and those surrounding areas, that's non-existent. So I think if you're gonna put the cameras on Trupe Avenue, Brinson Avenue, I think you should also, you'd be surprised what you'll find if you put them on Eastern Avenue and those surrounding areas also.
I will tell you that dark cameras are not.
They are? No, not just Eastern, I'm talking about the surrounding areas.
You just said Eastern Avenue.
I said Eastern Avenue and surrounding areas.
There are, I, I don't know the exact locations, because they're done by reference, there are cameras on.
Nope, on New Brunswick. I didn't ask for reference, but I'm saying New Brunswick should put cameras in those surrounding areas, because there's a lot of drug dealing going on in that area.
Well, I'll tell you, I, I think it's probably a good idea, it's fair and program.
Yeah, don't just, don't just.
This isn't the end.
Yeah, because it sounds weird, because Trupe and Brinson Avenue still like the minority area that have, you're gonna put them on surveillance tracks. It doesn't make sense.
You're right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
My name is Andre Shawell, P O five seven three five two. I have a situation. I'm glad you wanna help people, because I can't get no help from the police department, nobody. In oh-nine, I was accused of a crime of eluding, selling a lot of marijuana, under surveillance. And yet to this day, I can't get in court to get these charges dropped. I have motions right, can I get your copies?
Uh.
Of all these documents that I have, I have a motion, I'm trying to move for dismissal. I have documents here.
This your only copy?
Seven.
These your only copies?
Oh, no way, we smarter than that. Listen to this. We just spoke to the internal affairs. I haven't heard nothing back yet.
And where did you go to internal affairs?
It's right on there. When the court, October twenty-seventh. Eleven. All right?
No.
And I haven't heard anything yet. No, both of my court dates are on limbo. This court date I stick up now for internal affairs is from a surveillance. The guy that hit us with a truck, you guys have pictures too. The guy that hit us with a truck, I pressed charges, he's not picked up yet. Everybody know where he's worked. We got hit with a three-ton truck, I got locked up, I made bail. He's still not locked up, everybody knows about it, so I can't get no help from, hopefully I can over here. As I said, both of my cases are in limbo. My attorney, Antonio Toto, said the judges won't give him a court date, I'm just hanging on. Meanwhile, while I'm trying to get evidence, you guys, too. This is my audio from the police station. There's nothing on here. Yeah, yeah, you can't hear it, don't look for help, there's nothing on here. There's nothing on here. And the so-called car that you speak with cameras, I'm under surveillance. They don't have no cameras. I don't have no audio. Two thousand nine charge. We're still waiting in limbo while we're out in the street being threatened by officers. We can't find Tony Caputo, what's his name? Is that his name?
Caputo?
Anthony Caputo. We can't find him for answers. Nobody knows nothing. So I'm asking you guys, can you please get somebody on it, if the officer wanna speak? But I can't get nothing done. I'm hoping if we can't get nothing today, by then somebody come in here with the guys and answers.
There's internal affairs, and it was apparent to file in October, uh, and he should have an answer by now. I'm sure that when, uh, when Ms. Gaden gets back, I'll bring it to her attention. The other is a matter that's pending over in Superior Court, and we can't do anything about that unless screwed. Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office says that he is represented by, by competent counsel, so I'm sure it's taking longer than they want, but I'm sure it'll be taken care of. And I will mention the other two, Ms. Gaden, when she gets back next week.
The charge that you spoke of is over two years old. I'm understanding it's a statute of limitations. I'm understanding that Middlesex County also too is under pressure to get rid of some old cases. That's oh-nine.
There is an indictment. The statute of limitations applies to an indictment, not to how long it ends after there's an indictment.
I understand, but it's gone three years. I, whatever it is, I mean, this is an old case.
We have, we have no say about that, sir.
I understand. That's why I'm asking you guys, can you please get, help me with this situation?
Well, we will definitely follow up the internal affairs one on the other one. According to Mr. Hamilton, it's a, it's a Superior Court, is that correct? Yes. And you have an attorney, you should have the attorney follow up and get them to move on. He's tried, I think he's, he tried.
He's moved for a motion, but there's nothing that's been done. So I'm asking you guys, what's the next step to come and help me get something done? Because as I said, it's not just a case, it's we've been in the streets, being threatened by the officers day by day.
Sir, is there, there's nothing that we can do with this, of something in Superior Court? I don't know of any. It's not, we don't have that power.
Okay.
But these internal affairs, then we will.
You have any knowledge where to lead me to? Anybody, a lawyer, officer, anybody here? You don't wanna?
Well, I don't know, it's ready, it's Mr. Antonio Toto, and I don't know personally, uh, but I, I understand he's got a good reputation. Can I go back to his, where is Joseph? Anything else?
So the next time I come, maybe I can have some answers, hopefully.
Ms. Gaden is away this week, so as soon as she gets back, we'll, we'll go with the internal affairs. Does your, do you have any contact information?
Yes.
She needs to get in touch with you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, everybody know where I'm at. Your officers have me under surveillance every day, I'm not hard to find. Because of this shirt right here, we're under surveillance every day, okay? Because of where we be leaving. Now, by the next time we come here, hopefully we have some answers, and nobody in this, on these benches won't be shot or killed, or won't be, you know, doing this again, we had the names to it. All right, because we, you know, far as we just giving solutions, far as y'all telling us to help y'all, you was really asking us to tell on people. That's where the solutions came in at. You was asking us to snitch and help the police. That'll get us killed in the street, all right? You get paid to do your job. You also just bringing officers out there now this year, they should have been out there. They should have been out there before everybody got shot. Then it wouldn't happen. So what do we want? It's simple. We shouldn't have to tell you your job. I don't get no salary.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't tell anyone.
Yeah, you, you asked, I said you tell, you asked for our suggestions. You been, you guys been here. You guys been here long enough to know your job. You have a lawyer. Go out in the streets, they're not gonna arrest you, that's what your lawyer can tell you. Go out there, help them, get barbecues, show up, feed them, he feed the kids. He hasn't worked since oh-seven, he feed the kids. He's been harassed by the police, he feed kids, help him out. Help us to tell you, you working at Rutgers, he helps out with the kids. Help Mr. Pitt. He marches for dead people, why you got a family watch? It's simple. Come out in the streets, we out here. You can't do nothing, you're here as a liaison. You wanna give us a liaison that's been helping y'all be corrupt forever? We not, you know what I'm saying? It's the same, it's the same, you're not even, not that. It's the same pattern over and over with the same rallies, but it's different because we're exposing this city for what it's worth. It's corrupt at its highest ability. You watch elderly ladies, get beat up, you don't do nothing, that's disrespectful. If I was to jump on one of these ladies right now, I'd have to beat me to death.
That's right.
Not before I do work, though. But you were trying to beat me half to death, you were trying to beat me half to death. I don't fear charges, I don't fear nothing. No, this is a new era. You could, you could react, you have to react to coming in the street just like that. You see the attitude? Oh, who come in the street? You didn't do all that. But you quit to lock me up. You quit to really think of threatening me. You're not worth threatening. I want your help.
I understand.
You don't understand because you won't come out in the streets.
Someone else?
No justice?
No peace.
I hear this time.
No peace.
Yes.
Yes, sir. My timing is hard. Um, Glenn, Sixth Board. Um, if I could just offer two things, and this, this is gonna be tough. I think you're looking for feedback, not solutions. That means you're soliciting the community's feedback, which is a great thing. And there's no reason to look down on that at all, or question it. Second thing is, I, I recently went to a crime watching meeting, and I gotta tell you. Community Relations, we're talking specifically about Sergeant Gould and Detective Hudson, correct? At least those two. They showed up. They sat there, they conversed with us, they listened to us, they talked with us about what we were concerned about. And they actually had ideas. We gave them our ideas, we had an exchange that was constructive. They stayed for a good portion of the meeting, and we talked about crime, we talked about quality of life, we talked about even radar, speeding, posting signs for speed limits, so a couple of those issues came up. And I just gotta tell you, if you wanna, if you wanna get your message to them, get involved. One more, just one quick question. I've noticed a lot of, um, I, I think, certainly it's along Eastern, and I think I've seen some around, uh, the, beyond Eastern Avenue as well into the Hamilton, Hartwell area. But I'm seeing, um, some solar panels on top of the household poles? Are those from, I was watching C-SPAN, believe it or not, I actually watched C-SPAN, and there was a, um, problem. There was a, a meeting of mayors in January, I believe, and a lot of mayors were there, Hiscataway, Edison, I didn't say Mayor Cahill, but Representative Cologne was there as well, and they were talking about a federal green block grant. Are you aware of this?
I heard in my own hearing.
Okay, I was wondering if we got one of those, and if we didn't, we should probably look into it, because Hiscataway put up a lot of solar panels, and they're now powering stuff.
We have solar panels on our, some of our public buildings there.
That's fantastic. Okay, great.
We got a parking deck on New Street and, uh.
Excellent. And that might, yeah, I mean, if, if it's something we haven't gotten, we should look into it.
Yeah, we have.
It's great. Anyone else? Stradon?
So some of these questions reminded me of a few that I wanted to ask, but first I wanted to ask, is the Public Information Officer here tonight?
Yes, he is.
Good to meet you.
Good to meet you.
So the, the first question I have to ask, Mr. Timely actually reminded me, it was something I've been dying to ask the council for a while. I know that in, aside of the Highlands at Plaza Square or Richmond Court, one of those two buildings, there was a secret field office for New York Police Department spies to, uh, conduct broad surveillance across the Northeast, and that was right here, you know, less than a mile from where we're at tonight. Um, I have to ask, did the New Brunswick Police Department know about this? Were they notified? Uh, were they approving, disapproving?
I have no idea if they were notified. I know I wasn't notified, so. I have no idea if they were notified, I know I wasn't notified, so, that I don't know.
Is there anyone here that could maybe shed more light on that?
I don't think any other council member in the city generally knows. Uh, Captain Milligan, I'm, I'm going to this market, was aware of it.
I didn't know about it, and, um, I still don't know about it, other than I've read. So, I have nothing to offer for that.
I mean, how does that, how does that make the council feel?
What are people pissed?
I think it's despicable that the New York Police Department would do that without alerting the proper authorities, I mean, that's, that's outrageous, right?
Since they just did that quite a lot in New Jersey, so...
Yeah.
The police in Newark knew, though. That's a scenario.
I know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to accuse anyone of anything, but I'm saying, I think the council should speak out against this. I think the council should vehemently voice their opposition to this, and say that that's not cool, and that should never happen again here.
I'm, uh, I don't, I won't ask, I'm not quite sure what, you know, the police director in New York City program was, um, besides regular paper, so, um, if I am, I don't have enough traction myself to make any comments on it.
Okay.
I, I think so, I think I'm not the only one who's upset about this, this is really... I mean, I would be very, very appalled if the police did know about it, but, almost more appalled if they didn't, right? They should, they should have been notified.
Should have been notified by this department, not really working partners.
Yeah, so, like, what was going on was very... Sorry, what's that?
You're looking into it?
Yeah, I suggested to the council president that why don't we have our police department contact the people who did that? We don't know if the FBI was involved, I mean, you know, could have been something that was... Actually, I don't know what you're saying, I'm just, I think that our, I think that our police should find out what it is and what it was, and that we should be notified when something like that happens again.
That's great to hear you say that, I hope we do look into this, and I hope we do get to the bottom of it. Um, I, uh, three more questions, really quickly, so, um, regarding the incident where Victor Rodriguez was shot, I, I did read in the newspaper that there was not just the two New Brunswick officers in the vehicle, um, that pulled up on the scene, but there was also a Middlesex County, uh, officer, sheriff's officer, investigator. Um, is that standard procedure for there to be, uh, a Middlesex County officer riding along with two New Brunswick officers in an unmarked car?
There was one uniformed, Middlesex County Sheriff's officer assigned to the street crimes unit to assist, and as was the case that night. And he's, I believe he still is, I'm not certain.
Sure, and i- is it the same, same person every time, is there, does this person have a name, do we know who it was?
Does it rotate, or is it the same officer?
No, it's the same officer. Uh, I, I honestly don't know his name.
Okay. I guess I'll ask the county. Um, and then regarding, uh, Mr. Farazoli, the, the former civilian employee at the department, uh, what, were any of the police vehicles involved in the crimes he's accused of?
I, I don't know, I'm, I don't know, charged by...
I have no reason to believe that was the case.
The financial director, can we find out that I, I told him, yeah, I'm retired, I'm...
I, I, I think I heard that, I don't know for sure, but he, he may have been in a, in a, in a vehicle from, from the New Brunswick police at the time of the, of the problem. Well, count no, that's what I heard.
Were any cameras working?
Thank you, thank you for sharing.
Garage, that, that, that's just the truth, I don't know for sure.
Stands to reason, yeah.
But, um...
Okay, and then, last question, um, you, you came up that the elections are coming up for, for some of the folks here. Are, are you or, or your running mate planning on running again?
I think there'll be an announcement within a week or so.
Anxiously awaiting, thank you.
Did it last night?
Yeah, last night.
Um, I have a question. I was adjusting the media, um, a few weeks ago about being a non-resident. And, uh, they raised a question to me, that, um, I think there should be a residency investigation, uh, dealing with the New Brunswick Police Department, because it boggles me that you have, uh, Burdell, Maison, Weiss, and Bonheimer that committed acts of violence in our community and just vanished into thin air. Now, you know, I, I go to Starbucks, I go to all downtown areas, I haven't bumped into any of these officers, that led me to believe that they never were residents of New Brunswick to start with. So, I think that on that alone, there should probably be a residency investigation dealing with the New Brunswick police, just to be safe.
We, uh...
To make sure that they truly stay in the city of New Brunswick.
We, yeah, we, we, by law, they don't have to, but...
They don't?
No, you don't. Um, there's, there's nothing that requires an officer to stay and live in the city, county, or...
We do have requirements that they have to be a resident before they hire a kind of civil service specimen to become a hire. Um, we tell them, Mr. Kratos, we have sent a, a resolution to the state asking them to look into doing a residency law that would require police officers firing to be residents, stay residents of the city as their employer.
Oh, so you require they have to be a resident before they're hired?
We can do that as a condition of hires.
Do, so, do you, is that, that's not a requirement, that's just optional?
No, not, not as a condition to hire. It's a requirement.
Okay.
But, once they get hired, then they, they can move. It is a requirement, and it's looked into, at the time, somebody's coming up, it's checked out, but...
Is that a requirement while they're filling out the civil servants application?
When they have. Language on, on the date of the test, I don't, all the cabinets.
They have to be residents when they apply to civil service, and they have to be residents when they're hired. And we do investigate during part of the background investigation to ensure that that is true.
I know, we've seen it done with art.
That's a requirement?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, that's a beautiful thing.
Yeah, but the problem is once they're hired, they can go.
No, go before they're hired. Uh, so I was speaking to a, a former officer, and he said that a majority of the people before filling out the application are residents. And if there's a way we can look at the applications, is a quick fix is to look at their driver's license number. If that driver's license number doesn't match up with motor vehicle as it did when they filled out that application, you'll find out maybe there's a lot of officers that are not supposed to be in this department.
Yeah.
That should be something that we can look at, because then you can, you can get these officers off, and if these officers are retired, we can go after pensions.
Well, I don't know if you can go after pensions on something that's, that's required by the city, not a, not a state law or, or statute.
But, you still file your application.
Okay, what you taking?
Something, I'll raise it, I'll raise it a little more under...
We, we probably agree on residency aspect here, so we're not trying to...
Okay, alright.
We probably agree on that part.
Alright, thanks, thanks, Wilson.
Mr. Man.
Question. As far as, um, the officers or even city employees not living here in the city of New Brunswick, that means that they are not voters of the city of New Brunswick. And that's something that, that's something that, what, as citizens, who do we speak to? And how do we go about changing the law to have the police officers living here in the city of New Brunswick and make sure that they stay there? Because they are here, they move here, and then they become a police officer, and then they leave, they're not even a registered voter here.
Yeah, we, um, like I said earlier, if you did send something to the state, a resolution for residency, you can contact the assemblyman or the state senator, I don't have the number of our resolution, you can get it to, and cite that to them, if you'd like to see something like that, um, passed by the state government.
You know, and, and, um, living here in this city, and I walk, besides catching a cab, I do a lot of walking, and listening to this gentleman here, is that the only one I really see, you. I see you all over the city of New Brunswick. I, I saw you, you came to vote, but I might see one or two during lunch hour, but any other times, not one person, except for Mr. Rawls, you know, but, um, and I see him at meetings. But, I never see anybody walking downtown New Brunswick, Boyd Park, nowhere, unless it's an affair. That's the only time I see any city officials.
People see me out walk, because it's cold, I can't be outside, I walk on the other side, just keep on walking, all high school and back, and like this and that, and that area.
I see you. But you, besides Mr. Racine, and no disrespect, you're in a wheelchair, and you get around all of New Brunswick, whatever is going on, if no one else is there, you're there.
Some people wish I did, but Mr. Kratos sees me at the football games.
Yeah, but, but you know what did I? That means that you are involved, and that makes a big difference.
Thank you. Anyone else who, who'll return?
Final thing, it got brought up, I hadn't thought to bring it up, but if, if the president of the New Brunswick, or the chief of the New Brunswick Police Department came to you today, the New Brunswick Police Department came, and they told you they were approached by the New York Police Department, and they told you they wanted to run a surveillance program on Muslim students at Rutgers University, you guys are cursed with the burden of having Rutgers University in your community, so you would have had that responsibility. It seems that you were not made aware, it seems like the municipality in New York was made aware. So, if we're assuming that all the information, all that information is correct, that, that seems extremely disrespectful, and I hope that you do look into it, like Mr. Egan suggested that you do, but what would you say? Would you, I mean, I, I, because I really feel strongly it's a violation of civil liberties, I want to hear you wouldn't...
I, I, look, the only, I'm gonna say, I had to, I had to listen to what they, what they presented. I don't know what they're into, I don't know what kind of surveillance they do, I don't know what their, who they're, I don't know any specifics, and without knowing all that, there's no way I'm gonna comment on that. On the face of things...
Well, you look at, the governor's commented on it, no one commented on it.
On the face of things, do I think we should just be, um, random surveillance groups of people? I don't think so, but, yeah. I appreciate exactly what they, what they were doing, so... Motion. What was due adjourned? Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Esma R, and Councilmember Arlae.
Bye.
Council President, Jean.